I'd like to call the July meeting of the school board to order. First of all, let's do the pledge of allegiance. John Wood, look, do you want to be on?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Agenda is before you. Is there a motion to approve?
To approve the agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public comment we're going to have a little later, so let's move on. Is there a motion to approve the minutes for the board meeting on June 10?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Communication, school visits. They're all boarded up. Does it count if we just drive around? No, probably not. Monitoring schedule, are you going to help us with that?
Yes, Etterplace is a summary of the monitoring that we've done over the last four years, I believe. Just to give you an idea of what types of things we've done in the past. We do have a regular schedule of monitoring items such as economic achievement and the responsibility and citizenship ends policies. I asked for this morning if any of you have any ideas of something you would like to see over the year. We won't exactly make a schedule today. I'll try to fit those things in as we go through the year. I already talked to Mr. Fair. He suggested we take a look at the gifted and talented program. It's been a while since we did that. I think we've got a planned approval on the schedule for next month, so that might be a good time to do that.
I'd like to get, just hear how the four-year-old kindergarten goes after the first year, maybe in the spring.
I wonder, does the spring be a good time to do that? I think we should have a report earlier, once it gets started, to give us, but we'll do the big one later on then.
Only if it's good news.
It will be good news.
Over the years, we've talked about inviting our legislators to come to a meeting. And perhaps we could consider doing that and talking about issues like county court or school finances.
I think that'd be good. We've struggled to get them here.
Yes, we have.
We've invited and invited, but couldn't make schedules work. But I think we can try that again if everybody wants to do that.
Then another thought that's been, I think, a very, very interesting meeting is to invite young adults or older adults who graduated from our school district to come and meet us and talk about their experiences. And we did that, we've done that several times.
We did in 2009, '10.
Yeah.
So it'd be a good time to revisit that.
Then the third thought is to ask if there's any program within the district that really wishes would shine a light on them?
A lot of them. But that's what I typically do if we've got an open spot.
Yeah.
I'll say, would you like us to present to the people?
Okay. I'd be happy at some point, too, to give a report on the YMCA and what's going on. We have yet to meet. I assume things are going on.
Could be assured.
I just emailed Rick Johnson about can we meet and, you know, at least kind of hear what the planning is. So maybe in the spring, too.
That's probably good.
It doesn't have to be a monitoring, but.
A little later in the year.
Yeah.
If you have other thoughts as we go through the week or the month, just give me calls. Send me an email. Okay, well, that's a good start.
Andy, how old do you want the kids, the graduates, to come back? I mean, 65?
Yes, we'd like to, if it'd grill you.
All the schools are fine.
Recognition.
In your packet or online was a letter recognizing Wapaka Learning Center as a PBIS School of Merit. That's at least the second time you've been able, you've achieved that award. Scott, is that correct? So congratulations to you. Scott directs, Mr. Van Ness directs our PBIS program at WLC, and they're leaning on him at the high school, Middleton High School as well, to help them through this process. Congratulations. And once again, Wapaka FFA is number one in state. Congratulations, Ms. Erb, and your students, and Ms. Lehman. There is a newspaper article online or in your packet recognizing that fact. So good job. Thank you notes, there is a copy of the thank you note written by Aubrey Schrader, who has received one of the employee appreciation scholarship, scholarships that you awarded in recognition of our employees. And a thank you note from Destination Imagination, they went to Knoxville or Nashville. Knoxville. Knoxville, and performed there, so thank you. Nice note from them. Last, under communications, last time we met, we talked about the WRS, Wisconsin Retirement System, and what their rates are going to be. We didn't know them at the time, and we were assuming is 7.0%, which is what, that they would maintain the 7.0% for employer and 7.0% for employee. They met near the end of June, and they came back with a 6.8%. So that rate for the first time in a while has turned around and gone down. So we're doing the recalculations of the teacher's schedule and the other schedules to accommodate that 2% drop for employer and employee. So that's pretty significant. Mr. Fair was at that meeting. Do you have anything to add?
Yeah, just a couple of things. As Dave mentioned, the rate dropped 0.4%, which is a rather substantial amount in terms of the long term. And the good news, as I told Dave, is that our projection, and we do generally a three-to-five year projection, the rates for the contribution for both employer and employee will likely drop each of the next three years. Now, it might be a very insignificant, seemingly insignificant, like 0.1%, for instance, coming up. And that's, and that's under the assumption that we have a quote "normal" year for our investments and whatnot. And this half year from the 1st of January until basically July 1st of this year is a kind of a normal year for us, meaning all of our investments and whatnot are kind of meeting a benchmark. So the likelihood is next year at this time, we will probably be able to say we're going to drop them again unless something falls out that we, nobody can foresee. But it looks very good for the next few years because we're carrying over, if you will, some pretty substantial gains in market values. So just something to know that the contribution rates are declining on a pretty regular basis right now, and appear to be doing that. At the same time, I just mentioned our annuitants, meaning all of our retired people, which many people in this room are affected by either individually or the family members or spouse or whatever, had a 4% increase this year for the entire state, and are all of our annuitants. And our projections are for the next few years that they also will be receiving increases. Probably not quite as high as 4%, but on a regular year, which this one appears to be, maybe next year at this time will be somewhere between 2% and 3%. And then going forward for, actually, we project in our five years, and all of those five years, we assume, based upon normal, normal investment returns, that there will be a, some kind of a gain each of the next five years.
I think it's important to note that those aren't just annual projections. They're based on like the three-year rolling average, basically.
Five years.
Five years, so that they can safely go out at least two, three years.
Right.
And then give a fairly accurate projection.
And our overall projections, we do 25- and 50-year projections, because obviously we are a retirement service, we're not a savings program. And they all look pretty substantial. And I always try to put in a plug for the Wisconsin Retirement System because we are really the gold standard in the country. Our accountants, our, the people who do our work for us as far as like the statisticians, the actuarialists, those folks, they're not from Wisconsin, they come actually out of different states, and they go all over the country. They, they work for us, but they work for a lot of pension programs throughout the United States. And they, they tell us the same thing each and every time. Every other place they go, whether it's Illinois or Minnesota or Iowa, they hear the same thing, and why can't we be like Wisconsin? And quite frankly, we really have about as good a system as there is in the country right now, because most people are not giving out increases and reducing contribution rates. Most are struggling with how to make their payments. And we are still at 99.9% fully funded, which simply means everybody in our system, who's presently in the system as an annuitant or employed, like by our school district or city of Wapaka or county, whoever the employer might be, everybody who's in the system now is fully funded for the rest of their life. That's what 99.9% means. We have enough money to take care of everybody going home. So it's, it's a great system, and you're going to hear more and more things about it. And there's been very little criticism lately because most people wish they were us instead of criticizing. And it's always nice, giving me a chance just to plug that a little bit, it's important.
Administration, move on.
At last month's meeting, Mr. Fair asked if he could, if we could have a presentation on the high school scholarship funds. Oh, I contacted Mr. Kirchmark from Farm State Bank and currently the president of the High School Foundation, is that the title?
Yes.
So he's here to give you a presentation on the High School Scholarship Foundation.
The High School Scholarship Foundation was founded in 1994 by Joan Drana. So it's something that's fairly recent in process, but it's basically to help donors donate money to the high school scholarship, so the kids have an opportunity to go on and go to school. Typically, we get about 80 to 100 applicants on an annual basis. And we award typically between the fifth, the scholarship selection group does about 50 to 75 scholarships, depending on the year. There are other scholarships out there through the schools. Each college sometimes gives their own. There are other funds, so if you look down the second page of what I handed out to you, it covers what our committee chooses. So our committee chooses these scholarships. We have some that the donor recommends to the committee for tax implications. They, they cannot select it, it has to go through a selection committee. So they recommend who they'd like to see selected in our committees. Goes through that process to select. And then we have money that's not through the foundation. Some people want to give their own scholarships, their own money, set their own criteria, those types of things, so we just help them get to the presentation of who are they selecting and the process with that. Our committee works hard to distribute the money the best we can. The more knowledge we have of other scholarships that are given to kids, the better it helps us to distribute the money. Sometimes the money we give compared to what they're getting from other schools and things does throw those, those things off. But the committee is typically four people from the school district and five to seven people from the community. Obviously, when you're reading 80 to 100 applicants, you're spending quite a few minutes reading through some applicants to do the selection process. And then we have about a four or five-hour meeting on picking the scholarships for the, for the different scholarships out here. I personally think Wapaka is very blessed in the number of scholarships and dollar amounts that our scholarships are. I went to Ashwaben High School, a little bigger high school, and we did not have the types of scholarships or the denominations of 20,000, $5,000, $1,000 scholarships that we have here in Wapaka. So we try to stress to the kids, they are very lucky to see this, because I know there's a lot of other communities that don't have this. There's some in Milwaukee that just, we're talking about hitting a million dollars for the first time in the fund. We've given out more than that in the last four years, five years. So very lucky here, and try to give you a breakdown. This year's money is the first page, what, what each scholarship is. There's a lot of, a lot of businesses here in the community that give, give money. We only ask that it's $500 or more to be a named scholarship. So to get, you know, on the program, and if you've sat through the awards program, it's not a small thing, it does take quite a while, but it is need to recognize as many students as, as we're able to recognize in that program. I don't know if there's specific questions on anything with this.
Can you talk about the committee? Not necessarily names on the committee, but how many people are on there and who do they represent?
Okay. Yeah, we always have four from the high, or from the high school, people that, sometimes it's a teacher, administrator, so we always have one of them, and then the guidance counselors. And then we have people from the community, which kind of represent different businesses, different service groups. We've had people from Rotary, we've had people from banks, we've had people from county firms. We try to disperse it so it's not all the same types of people. We're lucky enough to have actually some people that don't mind being on it on an annual basis, which really does help the process, because they, they've been through it, they kind of know what to read. You get better at reading 80 to 100 applicants on an annual basis, so we've had some people that have been very, very good about it. But yeah, we try to disperse it, and each year we have somebody new or a couple people new, and we try to rotate that so they don't get burnt out in the process.
Jay, could you just give us an idea on, I'm looking on the first page on the dollar amounts, and I don't mean in particular, but are the trends moving upward? Are they steady as far as the received from 2014? You have a dollar amount here. How have those been going, say, in the last three or five years?
I think they're probably staying about even. We've, we've had some very good ones. The Albert Mary Rhodes Scholarship was an excellent one for a number of years, and that money has now been replaced kind of with the Christensen money that we have in there. So I think it's, it's about even. The Hatherleys have increased theirs, they run a bike ride here in the community, and they've given more in the last year or two. They're up to $40,000 that they've given annually. They're from Illinois, their kids go to school in Illinois, but they donate all their money to our scholarships here. So that is something that's, again, unique and very, we're very blessed that they, they run the ride up here and they do all the fundraising. They do live on the lakes here, so they do have ties, but they didn't give it to their kids' schools that their kids are 12 and 10, I think, so. That scholarship has increased, so there's dollar amounts. The Brunner Scholarship for $20,000, that increased this last year to three kids, three students were able to receive it, were in the past two. And that's based on, obviously, returns from market things. So depending on how the market does, does help scholarship amounts and the amounts of ones that we can give out.
Jay, sometimes there's confusion over the Wapaka Community Foundation, Wapaka High School Scholarship Foundation. How do those work together?
We have two separate funds. We have a fund at the high school level that we can disperse. Joy Griffin does our dispersing of funds. So we have one here in Wapaka that we handle. We also have money in the community, Wapaka Area Community Foundation, that's run by the Fox Cities. And that, that one, we try to do long-term investments with. So any, any scholarship that gave a significant $10,000 or more, we put into that, and they've done the investing for us, and we get the chance to take the money out and disperse it when we need to. So we work hand in hand. The Community Foundation has different restrictions than obviously our, our High School Scholarship Foundation, so we try to match what the donor is looking for. If they want something really, really specific, you know, Community Foundation's real good. If they want a little more flexibility, our 501(c)(3) that we are is a scholarship foundation of high school, seems to be a better fit for people. So we try to talk to the donor, see what their specific needs are, what they want, how they want it, and try to team up which fund or which group is, is going to be able to handle that situation better.
Oftentimes, we hear the amount of money that's given out annually, 1.2 million or something like that. Can you break that down a little bit? And that seems like a lot more than what it appears 85,000 on the bottom here, but where do those numbers come?
We try to break it down, what's local, and this is the local money, you know, and local things that we have ties to. The other things are the, the Saint Norberts that give dollar amounts that bring the tuition down. So some of that is also awarded, and that's basically all of the numbers together. So sometimes I kind of think that might be skewed a little, just because, you know, you apply at some of those places and they're giving you money to bring that tuition down. That does go in some of those numbers that you're hearing. But we try, we try to break it down to a specific, what are we giving here locally and what is given total?
And that's how it was reported out this year, I think, for the first time, as two separate.
Yeah. I think it's a better understanding of what, what's given out versus that big dollar amount.
But even the dollar amount that we heard from the local is a lot higher than the How do you, how do you reconcile that difference?
I didn't, I didn't put together that other dollar amount that was given, so I can probably try to find that out and get it back to you. I'm not sure exactly how.
Jesse, do you know what, or Rob, do you know?
My guess is some of the things like the Brunner are not included in this.
That total.
The 82,000 that you're seeing right now. Yeah, it doesn't look like it. So, so some of those really big dollar amounts, Hatherleys with $40,000, Brunners with $60,000, you know, those two in themselves are $100,000 that were given out this last year.
And then the Christensen one as well.
Right. Yeah, those are paid directly, yeah, those are.
So they're not in that total there.
Right.
Jay, what about the people, or a person who just donates on a regular basis, because you have some, you can check off on your, you know, those employees or checks and whatnot? Where, how does that money disperse? Where does that go in here?
That goes into the, the Wapaka High School Foundation scholarships, which are showing this last year at four, at 750.
Okay, so just the total dollar amount, whatever that is, every year is just distributed based upon how much comes in, and then it just goes out to people that don't?
Yeah, we try to obviously have a buffer with our, with our account to make sure we can long-term give enough money, but it's typically in that range, we try to, if we can't bump it, either dollar amount or the amount of scholarships we can give. But that's probably been consistent in the last four or five years, is that amount. I know when I first started on the Scholarship Foundation, I think we were given 10 out at 500, I think. I think that.
I remember that.
Yeah. So that number has changed based on the economy, our returns, and those types of things, too, to try to keep long-term.
So Jay, you do, this money, you kind of hold back a little bit and see what the recipients are going to get, and then kind of go from there? Are you one of the last to?
Yes, yeah, our foundation is typically the last to see, you know, who hasn't gotten something that feels deserving and that type of thing, and we disperse it that way. We've really worked hard at trying to get any of the other people that make decisions on the scholarships, get it to the committee before the committee meets. Because that way we know, you know, for instance, if, if one of these other ones, the nomads are picking somebody and it's this amount of dollars, we at least know that, that student has received something from them, and that can have a bearing on what we're doing with the other scholarships.
I think as a board, we've talked philosophically about trying to build our endowment. So, you know, the amount that the Wapaka High School Foundation has given out has dropped off a little bit, just because we are trying to build that endowment for the future.
So what kind of fund balance is, these are the monies that are given out each year. There's a principal amount in, in your fund that's generating these dollars, is that correct?
Right. And obviously, that, based on the market, we were down as low as 13,000, and we've been as high as 85,000 in that. So a lot of it depends on market returns and things like that, so.
And that's, that's your, the High School Scholarship Foundation, the amount of money in a scholarship fund at the Fox Cities Foundation?
That, that includes a lot more named scholarships, so somebody specifically gave $50,000 for this specific scholarship. So a lot of those are earmarked to something, it's something we, we don't have control over that money as much.
But some of those are endowments.
Yes.
Right?
Yeah.
So that money is put in right, right away.
Right.
And I'm thinking of the Brunner and the Christensen, there's a pretty large sum of money socked away to generate that kind of.
Yeah, and we have some paydowns also. I mean, like the AutoTech one is a paydown. So in other words, we were given $100,000 and it was expected to pay down, it wasn't expected to stay out there forever. So we do have some of those, a lot of the ones in the Community Foundation are those. The Brunner and the Christensen are probably the exception to the rule. We have some paydown, paydowns.
So when people want to establish a scholarship, is there a specific process for doing that? I mean, who do they contact, and is it word of mouth, or?
Yeah, we try, we're trying to get the word out to, you know, obviously, the people that deal with, you know, lawyers and the people that deal with wills, those types of things, because we, we do get some of those, and that's how we got Christensen and a few of the other ones. We try to get the word out to, we typically get a call to the high school, that's how it starts, is we usually get a call to the high school, and me or somebody from the foundation will contact the person and walk through the steps. What are you specifically looking to donate? Do you want it to a specific, you know, type of field, or is it open? Those types of things. A lot of our scholarships are to a specific field, music, science, these types of things that they have to go to, some of them are as specific as you have to go to stout and go into technology. And sometimes we can't award them because we don't have any kids going into those fields at those schools. But we walk them through those scenarios to say, hey, what are you specifically looking to do? What if there's no one available for this field? Is that okay, or would you still like to give it out? So we walk them through the process of saying, what, what do you want your scholarship to look like? Do you want it to last forever? Do you want it to last one or two years? What are you looking to do with it? So it's more of a conversation piece, a kind of checklist of trying to get it to, to see what makes sense, so we meet their needs. And that's the hardest thing, because a lot of times they, they haven't sat in one of these meetings to try to select them, so we try to help steer them in, leaving it open enough to make sure we can award it on an annual basis. But yeah, typically, I'd say contact the high school, high school, and the high school get somebody in contact either through, through the high school or through me or someone to meet with the people.
Jay, have a question.
Yep.
Well, a question and a thought. My daughter received a couple of scholarships after school's out, and one was for like $750 from the community. And I asked them, just out of curiosity, why don't you go to the senior awards recognition? And like, they never thought of it. So is there something being done to promote that? And number two, before I forget my question, because, for example, the Wapaka FFA and alumni gave out almost $4,000 this year. Do you suggest us keeping our own money and giving it out like we did this year? Or would you rather see us work a little bit with you in that selection process, or use the same application you use versus our own? Or does it matter?
Well, to answer the second question first, it doesn't matter to us. What I always look at is what's easiest for the student. If the student's spending X amount of time filling out an application, we try to recommend to any new scholarship that they use, the high school scholarship.
The process.
The process. The easiest thing with that is then, then the student doesn't have to go off and do this one, and this one, and this one, and all of a sudden they have to do 80 different applications for 80 different scholarships.
Which, which happens anyways.
A lot of times, yeah. But, but if we can restrict it down to some, I mean, obviously, we're picking 50, some, they're obviously applying for 50 or 60 scholarships right away, that does help the student, so.
But for you, it doesn't matter?
It doesn't matter. To me, ultimately, the students are what we're about. Whether we do it, somebody else has the money, we just like to coordinate some things with it to help the process. If we know that this student's giving $5,000, maybe this this other student is deserving also. We, we look at that through the process. So whether you keep it or not, that's fine. How do we publicize it? We send a letter out to each donor that's giving a named scholarship and let them know when the recognition banquet or recognition is and if they want to present. And I would say the majority don't want to present. They don't have somebody available on that specific day where they just don't want to.
But then Jesse or Jeff?
They do it. I, I actually did five this year that I wasn't associated with any of the organizations. I just did them to kind of.
And that's what I told this person. I said like, sorry, Jess, I'll give you something more to do. But like, I said, just to promote your own organization. It was an auxiliary. I said, just promote your own organization. You know, a staff member at Wapaka High School will do it for you. So they're going to call.
Yeah, we also posted them in here, in the newspaper, asking if anybody else would care to donate money towards the scholarship foundation or present an award. So the word gets out through, through the newspaper if anybody would want to present. But here again, if they don't want to present, we, we have people that step up to the plate and handle that type of situation.
Yeah, those are, that's obviously a great reason why we're doing this to, to get the word out, what we're doing and help them spread the words. Cause when anyone here gets questions, then they at least can answer or put them in the right direction of what we're trying to, trying to accomplish. So, yeah, we're happy to do any, you know, obviously the more we can give out to the students, the better. You know, the more money we can raise, the more money we're going to give out, the more money we're going to be able to put in the students' hands. And we have a lot of great students here in Wapaka. So it's neat to be able to give out that kind of money.
You mentioned that there's one application form for.
One application, right.
So you have a student who is a math student and an art student who might have a double major and they have boxes they check off to say, I'm interested in this scholarship.
Right. We have them check off. We, we list all the scholarships here and have them check off which ones they're, they're applying for. And it's a universal application, asking them where they're going to school, what they're studying, what they're, how they're paying for college, what they're doing to pay for college, any jobs they might have had. And we cover different things as far as need and a lot of different questions. So it's one application that can uniformly answer anything for any kind of scholarship that we're looking for.
And do you give money upfront or do you wait until the semester?
Anything done through the foundation, the second semester and third semester. They just have to bring back their transcripts and show that they're, they're going to school again that time. There are a few scholarships out there that we have that obviously they're only one semester or one semester or one year. And then those we give up front. So, but I, I would say ninety-five percent of the ones we give out are second semester, third semester.
As far as the application that the young people fill out, that's an interesting question. Because having had to write letters of recommendation from, for kids, I've seen that end of it, you know, what we have to write and forms that we have to fill out. Do the young people have to write an essay? What do they have to do other than put their transcript, their grades, what they're interested in or whatever?
There's six different questions that we ask them. I didn't bring that specifics, but they don't have essays to write unless there's a specific, there's a writing scholarship that does it separate, write up on it. But we can read a lot into those paragraphs.
Okay.
The letters of recommendation, because you and so many teachers and other people have to do so many of them, we've kind of come up with a uniform form versus doing a paragraph form where, where you can say highly recommend, you know, average leader, that goes on leadership, extracurriculars, maturity and things like that. So we re-rank those and we have the, the people that do the recommendation check those off versus having to write, you know, you're asked to write ten of these, fifteen of these recommendations. It does take quite a bit of time. So we've tried to help those people out with doing the uniform check off list. And that, that's very helpful in the process also. So we've done that. But the student does have to write six different, you know, paragraphs and/or essays. You know, there's some people that write a lot of them. And you can pick up a lot on, on that. We have people that are very good at detecting what was written and how it was written and how well it was written based on what they're doing.
Jay has a five oh one C three here, separate entity, all by yourself.
Correct.
And do you get audited or have you got audits?
Not since I've been involved. I'm not sure if it was before that turnout.
It's not a requirement, it's not a requirement of a five oh one C three?
No.
Yeah, each year I, you have to submit an audit, I believe. Somebody, somebody.
We're, we're submitting things to the, the IRS.
Yeah, a year.
Yeah, Jans, Jansen County is sending things in.
Jay, I just had a question about some of these accounts. If, if some accounts, I only speak for the one I know, the Tom Rattler English Department. If that, if that money goes away because it's been given out, does that account just drop off the page then?
Right.
Or do you hold that on there for any length of time?
Uh, if there's no funds available, we, we just, we keep track that we had it, but we don't, it doesn't show up on the list.
Okay. So only the active ones?
Yes.
Are there?
Correct.
Do we have many? Were there, no one's qualified? I'm looking at the Drivas one here.
We probably, I would say we have three to five every year that.
Really?
That are so specific that we don't have somebody going into that field or that school or that type of thing. So that's why we've worked with the new people to say, if we don't have, you know, if, if you want this to be your picture of, of what you're giving for, what happens if there isn't? Do, do you have the opportunity of giving two, if two show up the next year? Or do you have the opportunity to give to some other student that may be going into a different field? And some pick one or the other or some just say, no, I want to keep it only specifically for that.
And the Drivas scholarship was for, it had to be a wrestler. We had a minimum amount of senior wrestlers this year and they would have to fill out the application to be a candidate.
Do you have a sense to any kind of split between, excuse me, how many of the scholarships go to students who are going to colleges or universities versus say a technical college?
I see in the last ten years, I see a more shift to the technical college, but I would still say that seventy-five percent are probably in the four-year college. But I've seen definitely a shift more towards the technical college over the last probably four or five years.
Significant growth since nineteen ninety-four.
Yeah, we've been very blessed and I'm, I'm hoping we can continue to keep it growing and help them more and more soon.
Good job. Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thanks for watching.
Next item is a proposal for a back high school trap and skeet club. The handbook or the document online was pretty detailed, but we do have a number of representatives here proposing the club. Carl, do you want to introduce?
Yeah, I think I'll let John do the introductions and if you have any specific questions about the program. The trap and skeet club programs probably have been around for a few years now. And I think more and more schools in our conference and across the state is getting actively involved in providing a program for the kids at the high school level. So I think I'll leave everything to John and he can kind of summarize a little bit and if you have any questions.
Okay. Thank you for the opportunity to be here today. And we're proposing the Wapaka High School Trap and Skeet League. We've started a similar program to this already called the Wapaka Area Trap and Skeet League, which we're holding at the Wapaka Conservation to get the present time. We do have twenty-five youth involved in that program right now, fifteen from the Wapaka School District and ten from outside of the Wapaka School District. So a lot of enthusiasm with the youth that are involved. And by incorporating this with the Wapaka High School, it's going to give these youth the opportunity to earn a letter. And their participation is going to be as an individual's and on a team status as well. We do have Garrity Schmidt here with us today also. And he's got some good information for you folks. If you have any questions with it. Also Jesse Reichert has been in contact with a lot of the students for the district here. And I think he can give us some insight on what we're looking to do here too.
So you guys have any questions for us? What would you like to know more detail about?
Well, Jesse, maybe you could give us something along the line of a competitive aspect of this in terms of high school competitiveness? Or is there a competition?
Yep.
How does that work and where would you go and how would the students get that sort of thing?
What we'd be looking to.
Come on up to the hot seat.
All right. I think what we'd be looking to do initially would be have them start in the fall with no competitive aspect. And then typically the conference meets run in the spring. So.
Okay. Now, when you say they, are you talking high school age only?
High school students only.
Nine through twelve?
Correct. So they would be in the Kettle Marine Conference, which is more on the west side or east side of the state. There's a north and south division. We'd be in the north division. And we would be transporting the students ourselves with parents, coaches. We're not looking to have any busing involved just based on the funding aspect. That's probably not realistic because we are not asking for any funds from the school district whatsoever around this program. Costs to the students would be five dollars per round that they shoot and around this twenty-five pigeons. So that includes the shells and the clay pigeons, which is a really good deal if you, if you break down the cost of what that actually is. So right now, I think John could speak a little bit better about the funding that is already available, but we're not asking for anything from the school district and the costs of the students would be minimal.
Is this for boys and girls?
Correct.
And do they compete against their own gender or?
I believe so, yeah.
They'd have a girl's team and a boy's?
Yeah.
And if I can add to that, I'm Garrity Smith. I'm, I'm head coach at Hartford Conservation Gun Club. I've been promoting this since nineteen ninety-nine. I'm state advisor for the SCPP, which is this classic clay target program. I'm also president of the Kettle Marine Trap Shooting Conference that we established four years ago. So anyway, I've, I've been involved with this for a number of years. The boys and girls compete together on one level, but we have awards for separate for men's and women's category in our conference events and also our state events and other local competitions that we have throughout the state.
As far as the funding is concerned, we're very fortunate this year to have over six thousand dollars donated through a couple of the local clubs, businesses here in town, businesses throughout the area and private donations. And that's been a very adequate amount of money to work with right now. And I'm sure that funding will hopefully increase. And that is used to subsidize the five dollar cost per student right now. And it's again been more than adequate. So there's actually, the school board, school district, there's absolutely no cost whatsoever. Transportation, right now we've been traveling a couple of the clubs. And as coaches and such, we've been doing this out of our own pocket and whatnot. So transportation has not been a problem and I don't see it as a problem in the future.
And what, what, Julie, what kind of a season for, for, does, does this activity have? In other words, you start in the fall and end by Christmas? You start, you know, what, what kind of a season does it run all year?
The actual competitive season's in the spring.
That's correct.
You correctly.
The, the, the conference that we have is established, we start shooting competitively in early April and runs through the middle of May. Depending upon, we have seventeen teams in the conference right now, which consists of about thirty different high schools throughout eastern Wisconsin. So, and some of those high schools are involved in clubs. In other words, we have a gun club that maybe has five or six high schools that are competing together against the other programs. So, but our, our actual program runs from early April, actually last, second to last week in March to the end of or middle of May, where we actually have a conference competition. And then we also shortly after that, we have a state high school shoot.
And approximately how many meets would that entail during that time period?
This past season, we had, the south division of the conference had nine meets, the north division had eight meets. And that was based on the number of teams that we had in those divisions in the conference.
So almost once a week, sorry?
Once a week, correct.
When do they do it? Week day or weekend?
It's typically weekdays, week evenings. And it typically depends upon the host gun clubs that are hosting these events, what nights are available for them to host the meets. It's typically Monday and Tuesday nights work out for most of the teams in the conference. In the, in the south division, it's pretty much predominantly Monday nights. And I know in the north division, it's a little bit more weighted towards Tuesday evenings when they have competitions.
So how much can a, an individual expect the participation will cost you during a more typical year where you might not have funding? I noticed there was a fundraising component or responsibility for participants written into the documents that you provided. And could you talk a little bit about that as well?
Okay. We will expect from the students that would participate in this that, yeah, they would be responsible for helping create some funding on their own through maybe some raffle ticket sales or throwing out and promoting this aspect for their shooting. And they will be expected to get some funding through other sources as well.
Any specific amount, any target amount?
Being that we've kind of really run this outside of this spring here, I can't put a definite dollar amount on it.
And if I can help John out here real quickly. And because I've been involved with this for such a long time, I know most of the coaches that are in the programs in the state of Wisconsin. It varies on the dollar amount from club to club, from group to group. And there again, how much and how often these students want to travel and how much they want to compete. I would say an extended season for a student on the high end is a thousand dollars. On the low end, depending upon the club, is a hundred and eighty-five dollars. There are some of the clubs that are in my area, which would be basically Washington, Milwaukee, Ozaki Counties. They will charge the students a upfront fee of a hundred and eighty dollars plus or minus. That will carry them through the end of the conference season. All shooting aspect costs would be covered through that. It would also give them memberships into some of the programs that we have out there, which give them added liability insurance and some other things that go along with that. So each program is different. It depends upon how the programs are established and how they set them up. Fundraising can go from bake sales, rot sales, raffles, the, the local businesses and community leaders come forward with donating money to help offset costs of these programs and help the students out in the aspect of shooting sports in general are not cheap. But what we've done throughout the state, throughout the nation, is we've helped offset these costs and we've learned how to do these things by having fundraised for these programs to make it a little less, make it a little cheaper for them to shoot and be able to enjoy the aspect of shooting.
Just from the district of our size and your knowledge of those that may be interested at this point, how large of a participation do you anticipate?
Just from the students that I talked to, just to, you know, let them know about what John was doing over the summer here, probably twenty-five to thirty students just through word of mouth. The students tell me this student might be interested. Probably twenty-five or thirty, but there's a number of freshmen, which were last year's eighth graders, I think that were called. I'm not exactly sure how many that was. So we just worry potentially. And that's just from what we know right now. And that's assuming that it doesn't conflict with sports or other obligations students have if they have to work or things like that. We don't really know that yet. But, you know, that's why we want to start in the fall, kind of see where our numbers are at, just to have an idea what to expect this spring.
Now, you indicated that they have to be under safety certified. What levels of experience would you anticipate with the majority?
A lot of these students have been coming in, probably have another shot trap before. And they will be coached and mentored into specific aspects of how to shoot the sport and what it's all about. There'll be classroom instruction with it before you get it out onto the trap film and actually start shooting. Each and every field will have a coach and/or firearm safety instructor on the field at all times. So it gives the, you know, to ensure that they're following all the safety rules. And it's all, it's all, they'll be, say that they're going to be trained on a participating part of the E S.
One of the things that John talked to me about earlier, we have coaches programs throughout the state of Wisconsin. We have a class that I just talked to John about that'll be coming up for him. We have a class that I just talked to John about that'll be coming up for his interested parents that want to become coaches in the aspect of this. We also do the ASAP and recommend that they take ASAP, American Sports Education Program course, in which I'm pretty sure most of your coaches in all the programs that you have here have to do that. Safety is a primary concern with all of us. And the coaches classes that we have out there discuss a lot of this, go through a lot of the format of how to do this and keep it safe. It is one of the safest programs that we have out there for our students. At this point in time, there's about seventy schools in the state of Wisconsin that allow their students, student athletes to letter in the sport of trap shooting. It is an Olympic sport. We have, we have eight students in the state of Wisconsin right now at this time that are in Colorado Springs at the Olympic Training Grounds that are trying out for the Junior Olympics.
And there's another number of colleges that offer this as a sport as well?
About ninety.
I noticed in the agreement that you're proposing, or you're proposing, that eventually you want to go from court on court, may, sorry, may go from club status to adversity status kind of situation.
If that's in there, you know what, never doing that before, we basically took what the curling club and the bowling club had. And whether that was right or wrong, I don't know. We were just trying to do our best with what we had.
Yeah, okay. My guess, my question maybe is, the schools that are already participating in the conference, are some of them club status versus non-club status? Or does it make any difference?
Vast majority of them are club status.
Okay, so this really wouldn't be any different than anything?
Right. Vast majority of those schools allow their students to get a letter in the program. Some of the schools pay for the letters, some of the schools do not. The club itself has to pay for the letters. In that case, those programs have a letter that's designed like the high school letter that they have, possibly with a clay target in the center of it, but it's a slightly different design to offset that, recognizing that it has a club sport.
And that's what we discussed too. We would also cover that. We do that with the curling club and the bowling league. So that's one area that we do cover is a letter numeral.
So if a student were participating in baseball or golf, they would not be eligible for this?
Correct.
So this is for students who have, are not participating. And we're kind of thinking about the client calling. We may have interests and this may not be participating in a spring or fall sport already. And if they are, you know, they may have to make a choice on what they want to do. But we may be getting a, a, an area of our school that isn't involved at all. And this is something that we're moving forward with PBIS, that we want to have our students involved at school and have a connection with the school. And this is just another opportunity for them to have that. So we're hoping to get another subset of our population that isn't involved with anything but this program.
You talked about students from other schools. Is this limited to what back high school students?
Right now it has to be, yeah. And, you know, I, I think moving forward, that might be something that's brought up for discussion, but we're not, we're not even going to talk about that right now, I don't think.
And this is not a WIA sport?
Correct.
Even if there is no opportunity?
There's discussion through the WI, organization has, you know, proposed some things to the WI, but yet I think the number of schools have to reach a certain number to have that considered. But I think that's, that may be down the road.
If we bless this, does our insurance kick in here? Do you have any insurance of any kind? Do you plan on any insurance for your club?
Uh, right now-
Or, or is it going to come under the schools?
I'm gonna let Gary answer that.
And, and I, I, and typically what will happen is, in, in most of the programs across the state, once the school meeting goes through, the liability falls back to the school. The, the club that they're participating at has liability insurance that will cover anything that happens on the grounds. If this program decides to become involved with the SCPP, there's a cost each one of the students to become, and coaches to become involved in that. Each one of the coaches has to go through a background check. There's a three million dollar liability for each one of the students and each one of the coaches that's additional. But the bottom line is, once the school attaches its name to it, the school will have majority liability. And that's just the way it is.
We'll need to contact insurance company to know a little bit.
Yeah, I would suggest that we take the agreement and run it past our insurance company. Just do, perhaps tweak it a little bit. Another question I would have is, those twenty-five to forty students that are, how are they being transported? That are involved, that are part of the club?
Right now, they are being, are they at two events or-
Two events, correct.
Okay, if they go to events, I guess we have a couple of different options. They can be transported by private vehicles and/or there's a possibility that you could rent one of the school buses for it. I think that's another option, that's alternative, that we would, we would pay for any school bus, school bus driver, that would demand our funding or that also.
We understand too that if, if it's private transportation, all the vehicles seem to be checked over and all the drivers seem to be insured. And we understand that aspect of it as well.
If, if I can add to that, each one of the programs throughout the state of Wisconsin is somewhat different. Kewasken Camel Sport, for instance, they require their students to take the school buses. They have to manually take the school buses. There are, obviously with restrictions of federal laws and state laws with firearms on school grounds, they do not meet on the school grounds, they meet at a local park. And firearms are not allowed on those school buses, or ammunition are not allowed on those school buses. Other programs, such as a program that I'm involved with, we rent our school bus. Our students are allowed to carry their ammunition and firearms on those school buses, and we cover the cost of that entirely. But each program throughout the state is somewhat different, depending upon, different aspects of it.
Locally, does this take place at the club off by the Red Mill?
No, this will be a place at LoPac Conservation League, which is located over here in Hoxes off Apple Tree Lane.
Oh, okay.
Part of the condition of the program was that it would not take place at the club by the Red Mill.
I used to live out there too. I wonder what all that noise is.
You get noise no matter where you go. Somebody's always drinking ice.
Apple Tree Lane, okay.
So how often would the young people practice? Every day?
Oh, no. Right now, the group we have now practices once per week. And of course, this would be something that we would establish our, through our coaching staff in the school here, is how often would they practice, what nights and days.
Are many of these young people members of that club anyway? And they shoot on, I know there's different track leagues and whatever, do young people, are they part of that?
Okay, we do have, to be fair, we're involved that do shoot on our incident family, the rest of them are not. We do not require them to, to be members of LoPac Conservation. There's no membership requirement for this program. And if this is accepted by the board here today, these high school students would not be forced or anything else to join LoPac Conservation. So there would be, there'd be no, no term of membership required for this.
However, down the road, it might be a good feeder program to, to need our community?
Absolutely, yes, yes.
This is a lifetime sport. I have friends that are shooting that are eighty-eight years old, eighty-seven years old. So it is a lifetime sport. They're still shooting at today at that age and shooting competitively.
Jesse, I'm thinking of that archery club, just because I practice at shooting, I know a lot of those kids. And they do crossbow and shooting. I think their season is in fall and winter, but you might just want to contact them and make sure they know.
Sure.
They shoot both things, I don't know, just like, you know.
And that, and that could even be worked out where they're doing different days too. You know, since we're looking at a minimal commitment during the week, maybe a day upon it, I'm just gonna guess at most to, you know, like we worked out schedule wise, it's not conflicting that.
We discussed about monitoring earlier, remember when we did play disc golf, after the disc golf presentation?
We will get an update on how many kids are doing that.
We don't have to do that.
Or maybe in time when it might be fun to watch the practices.
Absolutely. We do have parents that come out and watch their, you know, their, yeah, this diamond, they're, they're just auto-worthy. A lot of other kids have developed in this. So it's not a whole lot of excitement to stand there and watch some of the great clay targets unless you're into it. And it's kind of like, hey, super. If anybody wants to come and watch, we're welcome to.
I was invited once and they never invited me back. So I-
Anybody get hurt in that?
Neither did anything. The pigeons.
They survive?
So if we, Dave, if we agree with this agreement, and this would start at the beginning of the school year of two thousand fourteen this year.
I assume.
And then next spring would be the competitive cycle of this. So up until then, it'd be just our organizational practice, working out the details and all that sort of thing.
Correct.
And then maybe if, if, you know, somebody will make a motion, but maybe we could add into that, maybe in a year's time, we could get a little report back?
Oh, sure.
That would be a good thing, I think, maybe for all of us, just to see where your numbers are. You wouldn't have to have, everybody would have to come, maybe even be a red group there, I don't know. But that'd be a good idea, and then we can kind of see where we are with this for the year. This is the first year.
If there is a motion, I would ask that it be pending review by the insurance person. But we already have this similar one in place for bowling and archery, or curling.
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 It's a little different.
You can fall on the ice. Concussions. This is a club sport pending review by the insurance company.
Sorry.
Any questions?
I would also say we should make sure, because if I recall, the agreement did say have comment about transportation. I think we need to talk about what the best option would be for that as well before.
We will provide transportation if students need it to Conservation Club through our normal bus routes that go that direction. We allow the students to ride the buses that way. Parents would have to pick up their child at that site though.
We're probably, one of us more like, more likely John will be in Conservation Building in the morning, they can drop them off, or if they live in town, they can pick it up on the way up there. But nothing would ever be brought out of school grounds.
And, and that's one of the things that the coaches all know and emphasize to their students, never, 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 ever on school grounds. It's just, so.
That's stated pretty clearly.
Yes.
Are bowling, bowling and archery going strong?
Yes. Very good.
And we do have an archery team as well. So the motion is to approve the proposal pending review of contract and transportation. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much.
John, I told you it was only supposed to be three minutes.
I told you you were in charge, sir.
There goes that invitation.
The next item is a seclusion and restraint report. The report is online or you can pack it, but I would ask on Ms. Markon, just to leave a quick summary.
Sure, sure. By law each year that we have to report the number of students who are secluded and restrained from the district and how many of them are students with disabilities. When we talk about seclusion, we're talking about a student who is not allowed to leave an area. So typically it's a classroom or a smaller room that doesn't have a lot of furniture supplies in it that could cause harm to themselves or anyone else. We, we seclude students when we know that they're at risk of hurting themselves or others, taking, trying to take off and run out of the building, especially our younger students. The ones who have really escalated to the point that they are out of control and can't control themselves. So that's, that seclusion time is giving them that opportunity to become more in control of themselves. During the seclusion, the student is highly supervised during that entire time. And then we keep record of how long they're secluded as well. For restraints, those are students who are causing harm to themselves or others. Typically, it's kids who are biting, they tend to lash out at, at another individual and start biting, kicking, hitting, throwing objects at individuals. And those are students that we need to restrain. And it's a two-person restraint, and they're people who have been certified in pro act training that, that do the restraining. And the restraining is only done until the child is back to a state of less escalation and, and then they're released. And then we tuck them down even somewhere after that and give them some time to relax and come back to baseline. So, and as you can see here, we have our highest restraints are, has typically been with one individual, has been extremely challenging this year. And what we do after each, each time that this happens is we do meet and we talk with the parents and we come up with plans of what can we do differently? How can we meet the individual's needs so this doesn't happen again? This one individual currently is receiving some outside therapy, doing some therapy this, this summer through Northwest Journey. And we try to get students into therapy as much as possible. We've been working on teaching our students zones, the different zones. We have a green zone, meaning I'm feeling okay. A yellow zone, my body is escalating. And they're learning, they're learning what, what's happening inside them that's causing them to escalate. And when they get to that yellow zone, we have some specific areas designated in the buildings that I can go here and this is what I need to do. And, you know, if it's right in the classroom or if it's in a different area, but I, I need, I need to go and, and this is what I need to do to help myself get back into that green zone. So we've been, we've been working really, really hard, especially this last year, on, on working on those zones with those students, with the number of students. And then the red zone is I'm out of control. And they know that. And it's not, we don't call it a punishment, it's just like, you're out of control and what you need to do to bring yourself back into control. When they're in that red zone, they need to, they know that they need to go to specific areas in the buildings because they're in that red zone. And they know that they need to go there because they, they don't want to cause harm to themselves or others. So we've been trying to educate the students of the different levels that they're experiencing and the needs that they, that they need to meet for themselves or have others help them with so that they remain safe. And we've been seeing a lot of success with that this year. But it takes a lot of work and it's a really long process. So, any questions?
Do you know that they need to approve the report?
No, I think that they just have to receive it.
Thank you. Future dates, August second is the WSP Summer Leadership Institute in Madison, if anyone's interested in attending that, let, let me know. And then August twelfth is our regular board meeting. We're back at five forty-five PM. Consent agenda? Is there a motion? Hope to approve. Roll call, vote. Okay. Benny Mannion?
Yes.
Patrick Farrelly?
Yes.
Sandy Robinson?
Yes.
Kirsten Greenfield?
Yes.
Connie Baldwin?
Yes.
Steve Johnson?
Yes.
Steve Shamble?
Yes.
Motion carries seven.
Do the athletic ticket prices stay at the same?
Yes.
I'm going to just approve sixty percent.
That'll learn to ask questions just a little bit.
You should know better. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Before we adjourn, could we, could I just ask one question? Is there an update on our parking driving project at the WLC? You know, we have to be-
Well, they started in the end of June. They started actually a little bit early. They have taken all of the parking lot or parking and playground areas out and things are progressing. Had a schedule, at least on, on schedule, some had a schedule. The, the ground testing was fine, so we don't have that, we got a contingency in there for what they might find as a testing ground that worked out fine, so that won't be spent.
No, I just was curious, because I remember that big presentation, I know what's going on.
It is underway, but started at, you know, very end of June.
Can I ask, how, how are we doing with hires?
I, I know we just approved the vocal music, but are there any other positions that we're still, how about the English?
It's still open, I think.
Interviews on Thursday.
It's a little bit harder in the summer getting the right people together to do the interviews. The vocal music one I did by phone yesterday, because she was out of state. I mean, she had already been hired and recommended by, already recommended by Mr. Becker and the team, but I need to meet with them, and she's out of state this week, so I did a phone interview yesterday.
We've tried several times to do English interviews, but because our interviewers have been gone and also our interviewees have been gone, we postponed until this week. And we're going to be able to have only one done by Skype at this point in time, had I done it earlier, or done two or three done by Skype. I like to see them in person.
See, can we have this afternoon? And when I saw, I was surprised at how few applicants there were for some of the positions. Is that normal?
Well, I talked to, I'm gonna just sort of jump in here, I talked to Dave a little bit about that. I think one of the things we need to look at as a district is to go onto the weekend system, which most of the young people now are doing. It's a cost to the district of nine hundred dollars. But in talking to others, and I have had some conversations with people outside of our district, most of them, in my estimation, and Dave has some, you know, got some other information, but most of them are using that. And I think we need to go to that system because that's what young people coming out of the school primarily are using. And, and to give you an example, I sit, Don and Madison, I sit on the board, they're the retirement board. One of the people I sit next to is a gentleman who is the HR person for the Bearwood School District, and I asked him about that. He said they've been using weekend for years, they didn't, they, they don't even look at anything else, and they have hundreds of applicants for most of their positions. And he said the reason they use weekend and the reason you pay nine hundred dollars is because weekend does everything online that you need. I mean, in other words, it doesn't just provide you a name, it's a whole service for getting the right people to the right, in, in terms of information. So that might be one reason that we don't have as many applicants, where we're not advertising in the right place. Again, that's just how things have changed rather quickly, and I know Mr. Becker had suggested we go to that for the position, my old position, if you will. And, you know, we may need to look at that in the future for all of our positions.
I can tell you that the applicants are very highly qualified that we have. It is a small number of applicants, but both myself and the interview team feel that we're gonna see some good people.
In a, speaking of vocal music in particular, the right people know that that position is open, whether it's advertised or not, even advertised. We have some quality people apply for that, just because of the reputation of the program and some. And I spoke to this person, I can talk a little bit about Kathy Allen, is the hire for vocal music. She's currently the vocal music teacher in Winnicott County, has been there for a number of years, had spent some time in Naukusah and somewhere else. But went to school with Mr. Wolfgram, and was a classmate of his, and she's ready to take the next step into a performance like what happened, and fully understands the expectations and, and is ready for that challenge. I felt very good after speaking to her yesterday.
Has she done some of the stuff that Dan has done?
She has performed in musicals and continues to perform in community events. She has directed musicals. She's not doing that at Winnicott County, that's one of the reasons she would like to come here. She did do musicals in Naukusah.
Okay.
As I talked to Mr. Becker yesterday, there are a number of, it's my understanding that some of the, like the assistant director is no longer going to be working with our students, so it's not only her, we need to fill in the support for, for her as well, and we hope to work with her to do that. Mr. Wolfgram was offered to come back and work with her in the selection of the musical based on the type of students that he sees coming up so that she's, because she's not familiar with that part of it at this point, and she has to get her feet wet right away.
But her plan is to do a musical?
Yes.
In the fall?
Yes.
Good for her.
That is a hiring expectation. That we, when we posted the position, we posted it that way, but also in the interviews we conveyed that it is an expectation that at the end of October, beginning of November, we'll be doing a musical here.
Yeah. That's a huge undertaking.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
What do you need to go?
I'm already, already late. All in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.